Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone would like to say in for the pledge of allegiance with God. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Review of the minutes November the fourth? Did anyone get a chance to look at those?
Yes, I'm making motion to approve the minutes November fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
For second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Audience call? Heather, I got you guys into that?
Do we just come up here to the?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Heather Davis and this is Michael Dwyer. We're with Rafferty Development who developed the Dollar General over the new one, over on, it's a market.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I get confused.
Yeah.
Uh, it's the, the new Dollar General market over there. And we're talking about, I'm sure you all are aware of the Endotite, uh, permit that we received and I know you all are doing work with Endotite and we noticed some of our work was gonna overlap a little bit. So, we kinda came here today to talk about budgets and things like that. Okay?
Yeah, so, it, like, like she was saying, there's, there is a great deal of overlap. Um, I know you guys' plans are now preliminary in nature at this point. Uh, I think, uh, some of our requirements at Endotite has, has asked us to do, there was a great deal of overlap with what we were needing to do. It took us quite some time, I think it was somewhere near six months or so, to get the Endotite permit. And I think some of that, we didn't realize you guys were making improvements to the road along that corridor as well, like the light.
We didn't, we didn't realize it either.
Right, yeah, so, you know, I think it was, some of that may have caused some, uh, extra lengthy time to make sure that the two projects were kinda married. Um, so, in looking at some of our, what we were looking at to complete as far as turning light and that kinda thing, a lot of that's captured in the scope of the project for that light along through there. Um, and didn't know with, you know, if there was some way budget-wise, we could help you guys out. Uh, from our point of view, it seems like it would be beneficial for everybody if that was all done as one project and not, we come in, try to do it really quickly and, of course, do a good job, but if, if.
But we might have to tear it away. You did, you might have to tear it away.
Right. I mean, at a minimum, probably the striping, you know, s- milling of the road, reflectors, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking of things that you could, could come up, maybe some regrading, things of that nature. Uh, but didn't know, just wanted to basically get with you guys and see if we could, you know, work, how we could help you guys, how we could work something out that would work good for both of us.
I, and I've reached out to, to Matt, trying to get ahold of him and I've not been able to connect with him yet. Uh, cause I knew he had surgery and stuff and to figure out.
He started his head engine.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I see.
Through Luckett and Farley, um, just so we can kind of look and, and figure it out.
Right.
But I.
And it was, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but there were, we sent kind of our plan to, I believe, these guys that they're putting together your old's plan. So that they could see what, you know, overlapped these two and kinda see what the differences are.
Yeah, I'm sure you did, yeah, yeah.
Right. Right.
Uh, but.
Yeah, United Consulting, they sent us, we sent them our stuff and they sent us their stuff so we could look at it together.
Yes.
Again, yeah, look at it together. And we've, we've not, and they're working with Luckett and Farley.
Yes, yes.
So, um, I think I need to probably get with Matt then and have him come back with some type of.
Right.
Figure out what, and then you all, I'm with Hannover College.
Oh, I see.
I helped with the, uh, Jefferson Together, um, the Lily brand. Uh, and I used to finance commercial real estate for a living.
Okay.
So, uh, GBT out of Nashville was a client, did a lot of Dollar Generals, probably three hundred of them.
Okay.
Uh, so you've got a number in your budget somewhere for the roadway.
We did, yeah, we did.
And Dollar General probably pays you rent based on the cost of the project.
Do, and as you can imagine, what we initially preliminary had from, uh, Endotite of what might be required grew tremendously through, from the time of approval, or from the time of, you know, submitting things to the time of approval, so that's.
For, for your, for your, just not for, not for what we're doing.
For ours, right.
Right.
Okay.
And then when we're look, you know, like I said, when we're looking at what's gonna be captured with what's coming up for the light and things, that's where it's, there's a great deal of overlap.
Right. Selfishly, I think whatever was in your budget, I mean, that's what they're paying rent based on, Dollar General DG's gonna pay rent based on. The Turners aren't gonna, aren't gonna over or underpay, well, they might try to underpay, but anyway.
Yeah.
Um, but they're not gonna overpay, uh, so whatever you all had in your budget, I don't know how to, I don't have a playbook for this, but if I were you all, I would, I've, if I were you all, I'd be saying, so, how much does your work cost?
Right.
What, did you all have budgeted for it? And that should go toward the project. And I'm gonna pick a number, your number was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this is the time to put in a hundred and fifty thousand and not seventy-five. This is, I mean, the, the town's got a big expense, uh, that it wouldn't ordinarily have, but there's some good stuff going on there. You all are gonna benefit from the light and the deceleration.
The sidewalks?
The sidewalks.
So be walking to your place.
Right.
Or crosswalk, we're gonna have a crosswalk.
Yeah.
We've got about a million six.
And at one point, when you guys came to the, uh, plant commission and you was gonna do the other location and all that fell through, I mean, um, they even offered at that time to help pay for a stoplight.
Who, who's that? Who are?
Well, what, uh, what was his name? There wasn't Will.
Got a ponytail.
It was Will.
Will.
But it was the other guy that, there was.
Oh, Will, Will McDonough and Kurt.
Yeah.
There was the other guy that came that night that was.
Kurt Rafferty.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
But that was to get us to rezone the property, yeah.
Right.
And we did not rezone it.
Right.
I figured that was just them wanting to pitch in to, yeah, kinda sway the town.
Sure.
I mean, they did offer for safety reasons, as I said. He understood the, the whole room of people yelling because, you know, it was unsafe.
Right. It was eventful.
And, and you weren't gonna be right there, you were gonna be down the road, over Vernon, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Which would've been a much better spot for you than that smaller spot.
Well.
Uh, but it didn't work out. You got to buy that without any, but it's a nice store.
Right. Right. Yeah, it's turned out really well.
Yeah.
Yeah, worked out real good.
Yeah, very nice store.
So, for me, what I'm trying to understand is what, since we haven't really even put in any permits or anything,
Mm-hmm.
the project we're doing actually hasn't changed your cost at all.
That's right.
Cause the project hasn't changed at all.
Endot changed on you.
Yes, yes.
Correct, yeah.
Endot changed, that, that's not us, that was Endot's thing. So, my question would be, is, in this, uh, email you'd sent out, you proposed splitting the cost of it?
Yes, sorry, uh, yes, we did. We, like he said, we were just trying to find, we knew that there would be some overlap, especially with the striping, and we did not want to basically do the same thing twice, or you all have to pay to do something that we had already done.
Right, no, I get, I get all that, but, um, but, uh, I was just double checking, there wasn't no increase because of what we're doing.
Yeah. Uh.
Well, not directly, no, but, uh, from what kind of preliminarily and by the book, what Endot would require on that type of road with that traffic versus what was finally approved after six months. That's where, don't have any concrete or, you know, you know, this is why, but
Yeah.
it's, might be safe to assume that some of that was because the traffic light was going on at similar times.
Sure.
Same, same Endot engineer was looking at both sides, that's.
Cause the traffic light was not going on when you proposed to Endot that you go there.
Right. Right, to the best of our knowledge, yeah.
Yeah, at first it was.
When we figured out there was a light, that's when we.
Yeah, yeah.
You what?
At first it was just a passing blister and then it changed to a left turn light and everything, and about that time, towards the end of construction is when I talked to Ms. Crocker and you were actually the one that first told me about the light because we had no idea.
Well, and, and, Endot won't help us with it financially, so it's probably not on their radar.
So.
Sure.
Right, right.
Sure.
So that's kinda when we got the plans together and have been talking in our office and to our engineer Will and we figured out, you know, dug a little deeper and figured out more about the light and, you know, just how far the light was gonna go.
Right. Right.
And then how far they ended up wanting our passing blister and left turn light to also go, and striping.
Right, right.
Is it working well where you turn in through the urgent cares spot?
We.
I mean, I've not seen a lot of cars lined up.
I find it hard to navigate getting in and out.
Yeah, yeah.
But because of how sharp the turn is in and that opening's not that, the healthcare place didn't have that big of an opening already.
Not that big.
Right.
Yeah.
I find it a little awkward going in and out, I don't, just me.
Is it?
Yeah, so, so part of the scope of, of what we've gotta do is, there's a gravel patch on kind of the Dollar General side of things, that was to be paved. Uh, that's part of, I mean, that's basically what that ten or twelve feet of asphalt is what spurred on all this turning lane and all that kinda stuff, cause it was an existing entrance, had we just tied into that, wouldn't have had any of this.
Right.
Uh, but no one, you know, semi trucks and heavy, you know, trying to get in and out of a sharp turn, it just seemed like it needed.
Right. Sure.
Yeah, it'd, it'd be difficult for a truck, for sure.
Yeah.
Let's just say I haven't seen any complaints shut up Facebook.
Yeah.
And that's where we're gonna see, that's always.
Yeah, I'll say, that's always the litmus test, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I see, I mean, I think we need more information.
Yeah.
Cause we don't, you know.
And we'll just keep in touch, cause we're just in the very beginning of planning.
Right.
Okay.
Stages of ours with Luckett and Farley. Unfortunately, it's almost winter.
Sure.
You can't do anything anyway, so.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we don't even, we really haven't approved anything yet as far as the stoplight on, exactly how it's going to
Right.
to kind of.
And, and our money person has given us the final approval.
Yeah.
Well, we're still getting quotes right now, um, well, they're not even down the construction drawings yet.
Yeah.
And that stoplight's part of a bigger project, townwide, college, a lot of things coming together that's got a limited amount of funds to work with too, so.
Well, I, I mean, the idea of not double doing, you know, building something and tearing it up, that's a great idea. You're right, we don't, nobody has, nobody has the money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just the continuity of it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That the project would turn out better and you're not disrupting the traffic but one time and, you know, things like that.
For sure.
Right. Right.
But you all have contact, we'll go ahead.
Who's had that intersection the past two days to work at? Are you guys?
I've seen them out there.
Yeah, cause that disrupted traffic. We had to wait to get through their measuring and.
Huh.
That happened.
They could be surveyors for some of that.
That's a good thing out there.
It'd have to be theirs, yeah.
It wouldn't be us, yeah.
But they, today, they were up high on a thing that took them up the light pole there and they were measuring across, so I think it was something to do with stoplight.
Okay.
But, I mean, traffic was at a dead hole, just because the driver, it was a friend of mine driving, and I said, just wait till they start construction if you think this is bad.
Yeah.
But we needed a stoplight there. That McDonald's is so busy.
Yeah.
We've got the fifty-two home subdivision that's built back there, they all use that road.
And I think the, the sidewalk's gonna be on that, your side of the road there as far as, you know, like a crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have the crosswalk.
That's what the plan shows as far as.
Right.
So it'll be a crosswalk going across and.
But you'll have people walking there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially Hannover College students.
Yeah, I was gonna say college students.
I mean, yeah.
I hope.
Yeah.
That's the goal. They come over and visit your store and.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Well.
She, is this a good time for, so you, we're using United and you all got some information, who are you all using for traffic? All of that work should.
So, Paul Primavera and Associates is who prepared the, the plans?
Paul Primavera, I wonder if they and United should get to, should talk to coordinate all of that once, because
Yeah. Yeah.
United's given the town council an idea of how it would stage and how they would start it, you know, when the barrels would go up and all that kinda stuff.
Mm-hmm. Gotcha.
It should dovetail with what you all need to have.
Sure, yeah. So we've exchanged cat files with, with, uh, United, so they, they have all the information that, uh,
Good, good.
that we've prepared, or our engineers prepared, and if it would help them at all, we'd be happy to, you know, to set up a conference call or something similar to, to do that, sure.
Yeah.
Sure. And I've emailed with Mr. Anderson, I believe is his name at United, I cannot remember his name. Um, and he's been very nice, very helpful, um, so, yeah, we can definitely, like he said, have a phone call or anything with them.
Okay.
Um, cause he's kind of, you know, said if you need anything on his project or we need anything, I'll reach out, I'll let you know.
I'm hoping Matt will get back with me tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll move forward and.
But do you know when you proposed the dollar store? We had the stoplight in mind, but we didn't have the money.
Sure.
Uh, and we got the Lily brand things to the college, so, cause the Endot already told us they're not gonna help.
Well, I think it. Yeah, that's, that's what I was remembering from that meeting, was that it was, you know, sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
You two particularly might not have been eluded then, but Rafferty was aware that a stoplight was easily possibly gonna go there from the beginning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but it was, it, way we understood it was, that's what you wanted, but Endot said, sure, pay for it.
But, but. Right. Yeah. Pay for it.
So, you know, that doesn't really, it wasn't coming, it just says what you guys want.
Pay a million and stuff.
Right. Right.
Right. But it's good timing, before you have your stuff done and.
Sure.
It'll coordinate.
I think the majority of your work won't overlap with this, the way of, when I talked to Matt about it just briefly, like you say, maybe some of the striping
Right.
and signage and things like that, but as far as the major construction, we gotta get back with from him, but I don't think there's gonna be a lot of major construction overlap in the two.
Gotcha.
But we'll, we'll leave it up to the.
Yeah.
Have a brief.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, we're glad you're in Hannover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're a new business force.
I think, I mean, uh, hopefully that you guys are pleased with it, I think it turned out really nicely.
I mean, I hope.
Yes.
Yeah, it's nice down there.
Yeah.
Quick.
Very quick.
Yeah, it goes up fast. It's crazy how quick they build them.
I'm just excited that we are getting a stoplight and it's gonna, I mean, between the college entrance and, uh, McDonald's, that area, that little strip right there, there's been so many wrecks and fatality and.
Sure.
But Endot said it wasn't enough to help with the stoplight. So.
Well, is there anything you, you, you want us to reach out to?
I mean, if, if you wanna reach out to United again, and I'll reach out to Matt and just have him and just tell him, and I did share your email
Okay.
Okay.
and everything with, with Matt, I just, like I say, I've not heard back from him.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And he's at Luckett and Farley?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's the main guy.
Yeah.
I've only talked to you, um, United, I have not talked to you back from Luckett and Farley.
Yeah, Matt, Matt and Olo, so, yeah.
Okay.
Do you know what the budget amount was offhand that you budgeted for the work on the road?
So the original budget amount was, uh, fifty-two thousand dollars. And that's putting the cards on the table.
Yeah.
So, and then, and just to be one hundred percent fair, the quote that we got from, well, we tried to have it quoted from two different places. One, they just never provided anything, but the one that we did get back was seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and some odd dollars.
Yeah, I, I got it, that's the one that she sent in the email, yeah.
Yeah.
The.
And that was, that was Dave O'Meara?
No, they actually never got back with us.
No, they never did.
They didn't, okay.
Estis activating.
Yeah, that's Estis, uh, and we have worked with them on stuff in the past, so we knew them pretty well and so we knew we could reach out to them.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, the fifty-two was when it was initially proposed with Endot and it was just the passing blister and then as it grew, obviously, the grant grew.
Yeah.
But the budget was still the same, cause it was already submitted and all of that.
I'm surprised for the difference in work, it didn't go up more than that, to be honest with you. That's a lot more work than what initially was planned.
The tape that was planned, it's the going all the way back to the intersection, the turning lane, some of that stuff, so, I mean, it's,
Right.
you know, some of that was still, trees had to be moved and reditching, grading, some of the things like that, so, but, you know, it, just the more, the more, it, it did grow.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just say everybody keep in touch with each other, it'll work out.
Yeah.
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 Thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming in.
Thank you.
Is that raining?
Yep.
Did Shane or, um, Scott have anything for us tonight?
Uh, Shane gave me this letter, um, about Crow Street.
Thanks for coming.
Okay.
Oh, about the, whether one-way or, yeah.
I'll just read it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
To whom it may concern, there have been recent conversations regarding possibly converting Crow Street into a one-way roadway. After the discussion with my fellow officers reviewing call for service data, crash history, and my own experiences over the years, we do not recommend making this change. Crow Street has operated safely and effectively as a two-lane road for many years. During that time, we have seen very few issues or incidents that would justify altering its current flow of traffic. Based on the information we have, the existing two-way design continues to serve the community well and does not present a public safety concern. Our priority is to support the decision, enhance safety and accessibility for everyone, and at this time, we believe Crow Street should remain as it is. Best regards, Chief of Police Shane Codwell.
Well, I'm making motion to support what our police told us because we left it up to them.
Okay.
For a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Did Scott have anything to say?
Nope.
Do you know if they got the part, did they fix the sewer thing down there?
Yeah, they got the part.
So it's all fixed now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Kobe, you got anything for us?
Um, talked a little bit about Luckett and Farley.
Okay.
Um, about the invoices.
Okay.
Um, I haven't received all of them evidently.
Uh, yeah, I just sent them to you and you should find that, all six of them total to about a hundred and thirty thousand, which is covered by the subgrant.
Right.
But, but you need all six of them, so.
Is that the email you didn't get?
Yeah, I didn't get, I, I just got half of that. Um, so, of course, need to write up a subgrant agreement
Right.
for the hundred and thirty thousand and.
It's already, yeah, it's already, this is already in place. So, there, you did a subgrant, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you're good, no.
I'm trying to save you worry.
Yes.
You've got a two-hundred-and-three-thousand-dollar subgrant for streetscapes and sidewalks and then a twenty-nine or something thousand-dollar subgrant for the park work.
Twenty-nine oh forty-five?
There you go.
Okay.
Those two, so that's what, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand bucks. Those cover, also what I need from you is what I sent in that email to you with the bullet points and said, you know, just tell me what you need, what it covers and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
If you don't have that email, let me know.
No, I have that one, but I didn't get the rest of the invoice.
But she sent all six of the invoices in one email.
Cause I thought at one time it was.
Oh, then did you see, did you see the other four, I wonder if.
I mean, I looked at the email and I printed these off and then I didn't see anything else on there.
Okay. Well, then you know if you didn't get it.
I thought it was gonna be three-hundred-and-four-thousand from them with the streetscape and the parks and everything.
I think the parks was just separate.
Cause I wrote three-hundred-and-four-thousand down in the office for, for some reason.
For that, oh, three, oh, well, I don't know, I'd have to go look.
I didn't think it was that high, but.
I don't have anything with me on it, but, but the grant covers the invoices.
The grant will cover the invoices.
The grant will cover the invoices, you just have to make a request
Yeah.
for reimbursement. And, but you all have to be satisfied with the invoices, as I tell you in that email, it's like, they're, you all are the client, so you all should look at the invoices.
So, yeah, we need to get you guys to look at all the invoices. I've only got two, I've only got two, I mean, they only equal fifty thousand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
I didn't get the other four, so.
So if you have those, can you send them to us?
You get all six up together, just email them.
Then email them all, yeah.
Well, I've just.
Print them out for Tim.
But I can also print.
Well, he didn't, he didn't get them.
Well, but I just emailed them.
Oh, just now?
He just emailed them now, so what I'll do in.
Sorry. Don't you have email on your phone?
Not my town.
Okay.
So when I get in the office in the morning.
Okay.
I'll email everybody.
Okay.
All the invoices, that way you guys can go over them.
Okay. Got it, got it.
Yeah.
And then.
Print a copy for Tim to pick up?
Right.
Yeah, I'll make it.
And I'll do email.
That's right, yeah.
Don't leave it.
Yeah.
Alright. Lightning struck within six miles. That was my bulletin.
So. So, yeah, really, all I had was luck at Farley getting the subgrant agreement and getting them paid.
Right. Right.
Have we heard anything back about the DNR?
Uh, move to the next one, um, yeah, um, they called, said they've got everything and they're working on it, so.
Did you send, did you send them the last thing for?
No, not yet. He, he's sending, sending me the thing to fill out, and then soon as he sends it to me, then I'll fill it out and be good. But I got all the invoices to put on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And we're paying from that reimbursement, we're paying for the cameras here to be put back on the poles.
Yep, as we talked about last meeting, yes.
Okay.
Our tennis court guy hadn't called back or?
Nope, no, I got on my email where I emailed him.
What's that?
Jesse Henderson.
Oh.
Tennis court's out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I sent another email, so.
Once you pay, it's hard to get people back.
You're right.
And you gotta pay.
These days, it's hard to get them here even if you're paying them.
It is.
Uh, neighborhood speed signs, we did get.
And they're up too. I saw several up.
Yeah, they're sta- they're starting to put them up, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they really stand out.
Do they?
Yeah.
I haven't looked and seen it yet, but Scott did say that they were putting some up and we got another, um, shipment of them in the mail today, so there we go.
Yeah. Yeah. I saw. Five or six of them up over in your area.
Nice.
Good.
I, um, I went through Vernon the other day, and soon as I got into Vernon, like, going across, there's a sign right there, and I mean, it was flashing.
Oh.
And I was like, whoa, and then, when I turned off, cause my mom and dad live over there, and I went down one of the little side roads, there was another one. So.
You can tell me those don't work.
They paid for those.
I'm just wondering where they got theirs at, cause I mean, Vernon doesn't have a whole lot of money, I don't think, so I was like, wow, but they did catch my eye, I was like, I think it flashed green. It was different.
I think we can take that off the agenda.
Yep, I just, I just said take off, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Employee handbook, I haven't had a chance to really, my dog was sick yesterday.
I know, it's been crazy.
It, it is, so.
We'll get to it, though.
We will, we will.
It's in progress, for sure.
Yes, yes.
Well, I think one thing we need to add on here, that's just as important, yet not more important, is our code of ordinance book. It's in desperate need of being, and a lot of it is just like the handbook, we can go through it and do it, and you know, it's that thick.
I mean, I just feel like we need to have work sessions, that would help a lot.
Yeah.
If we could just, you know, have a work session, just, you know, a couple hours, maybe a month.
Well. They're open meetings, so.
Yeah.
And once, once we get our notes all digitized.
Yeah.
I think we'll probably just need, we need a couple more times to do that, then we can have a more session.
Yeah. I mean, they're gonna, everyone can look at it, yeah.
And we could do the same with the code of ordinance book, have like a small subgroup and.
Yeah.
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 Have a bigger work session.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good. Veterans Garden, Scott's supposed to be working on that, Scott Davidson, uh, Building Inspector, zoning enforcement.
It's in the works.
In the works.
Hopefully by the first of December.
That's what they told me. Uh, no littering dumping signs.
I sent all that to Scott with our attorney's approval, but I didn't hear back from him. So, as soon as he gets them printed, we did it, uh, we followed state ordinance and went up to a thousand-dollar fine.
So do we need to adopt the state ordinance, or does it just, we just, we just already?
It's, 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 it's already in there.
Okay.
That we follow state ordinance, yeah. Well, no, Kobe, you were going to change the ordinance, remember?
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
To reflect the ordinance.
That's right, yeah.
If we could have that on the next agenda, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you can't find that ordinance, tell me and I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody have any other old business? New business, twenty-twenty-six nine-one-one interlocal agreement? Okay. So, it's an amended interlocal agreement regarding emergency dispatching, communications, and other services, and this will be with the county and the city of Madison.
And the only thing to change, the composition of committee.
Yeah, so the committee, uh, there should be a nine-one-one communications administrative board, um, it's composed of the following seven persons, uh, County Commissioner, the County Sheriff, the Mayor of the City, the chief of, the chief of the Madison Police Department, a town, that should say probably a Hannover Town Board Member, uh, the chief of the Hannover Police Department, and a county deputy appointed by the sheriff.
They didn't put a Hannover on there, because they referred to it earlier and said, we'll call it town, so that's why they.
Okay. Okay.
Cause we're the only town.
Um, and the amount is.
It's the same.
Twen, is it twenty-one?
I can't remember.
Is it twenty-one?
But it, it didn't change.
Uh.
It won't change until they've got the year in there.
Maybe twenty-twenty-six.
And we'll have to watch our budget when we come to that year.
I know Kim told me that.
Twenty-five thousand, two hundred.
It's what?
Twenty-five thousand, two hundred.
But it's through what, it's saying there?
Is it, is it say through twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're good.
Yes.
For this next year, so we'll have to look.
But they'll, they'll come to us.
Wanting one.
Yeah, for more.
When I'm one director, well.
Yep.
So I think we could, and I'll make a motion to approve the second reading, providing all the other entities prove it too. Cause we can't do it alone.
The other, yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
So, the county, they've all gotta approve it too.
Okay. Any more?
And then we'll sign.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, so we won't sign this now, we'll wait?
No.
Wait until the other two.
What they did last time, they all signed and they gave to me for us to sign, then I took it back to them.
Yep.
Alright, twenty-twenty-six animal shelter, the interlocal agreement. Final reading. Um, so, this has changed also.
Well, we didn't have one.
Yeah, before, yeah, we never did have, this would be the first one.
Yeah, but as far as member-wise, we was, we had a member on the animal shelter board.
We had a member, yes, but that's all gone, that was dissolved, yeah.
That's all gone now, that's what I'm saying, so that, that, that part's changed.
Right. Right.
So it's just, and we will pay up to.
Forty-one hundred?
Fifteen.
We pay forty-one hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, up to fifteen, yes, yes.
Up to fifteen thousand.
Yeah. And there again, I'll prove the second reading, provide all the others do.
How do you get forty-one hundred up to fifteen thousand?
That's just, there's just saying up to, we don't have to pay over, ever, over there.
So we, we had budgeted for four, they had in here that we would pay fifteen thousand, we budgeted forty-one hundred.
Yeah.
And we said, our, our budget can't sustain the fif, sustain the fifteen thousand right now, so what he did is just put that we will pay something up to fifteen thousand.
Up to.
Up to, yeah.
And, you know, if next year we have a tight budget year, we can only do three thousand, we already talked to the mayor about this, then we're fine.
This year it's forty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna pay the forty-one hundred, and then I could come back and say, well, we want another five thousand.
No, no, no.
No, no, it's up to.
We've, we've.
Well, up to fifteen, though.
Yes.
Up, up to fifteen, but our budget was for, but let's say we have a good year and we could pay six thousand dollars, you know, or.
Yeah. Yeah. We used to pay five.
Yeah.
Did we?
And we cut it down, cause.
We decide, they don't decide for us.
Yeah.
We decide, our budget decides what we pay.
So they can't come back and ask for more money after we pay them the forty-one hundred?
No, no. No.
Okay.
Debbie and I met with Mayor Courtney.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
But there again, I don't think we should sign anything till they all sign, cause we can't do it alone.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
So I make that motion.
Okay.
Do a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. I think the city is approving both of these tonight, too, the nine-one-one and the animal.
Okay, we have resolution, twenty-twenty-five dash one, it's a resolution, setting the holiday closing for full-time employees of the town of Hannover for twenty-twenty-six. So we have New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Good Friday, the primary election day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Election Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. Christmas, there's, they're off the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, Thanksgiving, the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh.
Comments, Tim?
Oh, I'm not.
Well, I looked at what we did this year, it's consistent with what we did, so.
What it's done in the past, yeah.
I make a motion to approve it.
We just, we're following what the county does, yeah.
Yeah.
Do a second?
Second.
Didn't we have the Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples?
That's what it is, that's what I said, Columbus Day.
Oh, you just, oh, okay.
Indigenous Day.
Yeah, it's not two different days, it's just one, one day.
Yeah.
I know it's same day, I did.
Yeah.
I just put them together, cause.
Okay, there you are.
Yep.
Alright, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. I could say that's lenient, but we're, we've worked, cause Debbie didn't always get a lot of holidays, but we, we got two weeks at Christmas.
Really?
At the college, yeah, when the kids were gone. Debbie didn't.
I didn't, I didn't get holidays.
She never got all the holidays, yeah, and we got three days at Thanksgiving, so.
We get what they do.
Never got holidays.
You know, a lot of schools are going to a week for Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep.
But we didn't get President's Day and all that stuff off, but.
You signed both copies?
Yeah.
You need both copies signed?
Just the one, right?
Or just one?
Just the one.
Just the.
I think she gives one to read from and one to sign.
Yeah.
Make sure you sign by your name, I messed up a couple times on that.
Yeah.
Do you sign in Tim's spot?
No, I did mine this time, I have messed up on that before, though.
Oh, okay.
Right. Do we have any other new business?
Uh, yeah, just something to bring up, so, you guys know I live on West Crow Street behind the gas station.
Right.
Well.
You're, you've been kinda invited to cook up, but you never have.
Yeah, okay.
Hit me there.
Um, anyway, so a couple weeks ago, a, a nice semi driver decided to go all the way up in my yard and hit the bank, five feet in my yard and plow the dirt away from my hillside.
Oh my gosh.
Well, this happens like once a week, usually not that far, usually they just run off, and then I gotta go out there and spend two hours fixing their tire marks. Anyway, I was talking to Officer Daniels about it, I made a report on that one, cause he went all the way up in my yard, but, um, and it happens all the time, and he felt the same as I did, that maybe there should be no trucks allowed on that road, cause it's not big enough for him to make the turn safely in and out.
It's not, it's not big.
So we're throwing it out there, maybe possibly make that no trucks allowed on that street.
So is it the one that goes behind?
Behind Circle K.
Is it the semis that, um?
It's semis, the only thing really have a problem with it, a truck and trailer is not so bad.
Are they coming in Circle, are they coming down Circle K and up in your driveway?
Yeah, they come out of Circle K.
So the gas trucks.
So they're not coming down past dicuses and, or hammer implement?
If they came in the right direction, it wouldn't be a problem, but they'll come off the highway in the front entrance, pointing towards my house, and then they can't back out on the highway.
Right.
So they got a forty-foot trailer trying to get out a fif, ten, twelve-foot wide road, and that just doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they could have made that highway a little different.
That was the only solution we could come up with to take care of that problem, not to mention they've almost hit cars there several times pulling out, cause they come off the highway pretty quick, and semis are coming out, and.
So the gas trucks and everything would go.
Gas trucks, the one that came all the way up and hit my yard was actually a farmer hauling grain from Kentucky. But he hasn't had any response from them, but.
Well, I don't see a problem with saying no trucks. It is very narrow.
Yeah.
The trucks do have another way to get out of that parking lot and through that area.
Out onto the highway.
The gas station has three entrances, one on.
Yeah, or they could go out.
Main street, the highway, and if they came the right direction on that road, it wouldn't be an issue.
I think it's cool right out, yeah.
It's swinging back, yeah.
If they came in that side and out on the highway, it wouldn't be a problem on that road, but, um, may call the problem at the stoplight then, though, I don't know, if they go out that way, trying to pull out into the, it's real close to the stoplight, too.
Well, they can't do that one, cause it's got that.
They couldn't make that turn.[1452.84]